Okay, so let's do the first question that it's Nafisa, yeah, yeah, she is here. So the first question that she asked was a hyperbola question. And I'm going to start off just by asking you guys like, what makes hyperbola hyperbola? Anybody can, anybody can offer their wisdom. What makes a hyperbola hyperbola? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So, so what makes a hyperbola hyperbola?
X is in the denominator.
Yeah, so X is in the denominator, okay, so, so you can see X is in the denominator. And why that's important is because when some, when a variable is in the denominator, you always have to be very careful because that means that your expression could be undefined. So what does it mean, what, what, what does it mean to be undefined? You know, what do we mean? The denominator is not right? So, anything that makes the denominator not is going to make your function undefined. And since this function has x plus one in the denominator, what's going to make it undefined? What value of x?
Minus one.
Minus one, right? So that's why you see that x equals minus one is, is a value of x that the function will never ever be. X will never be minus one, because if x is minus one, then the denominator is going to be undefined. Right? So, and what is the graph of x equals minus one? We did this last time, what is, what is x equals minus one? Anyone? What is the graph of x equals minus one?
It's a vertical line.
It's a vertical line. Alright, so now do you understand why the asymptote is a vertical line?
Yes.
Did that click now? So, this asymptote is a vertical line, because this vertical line is x equals minus one. And we said that x can never equal minus one, because that would make the function undefined. Everybody get there? Everybody, okay, you guys can talk to me, just talk to me to say, okay, if it doesn't make sense, you just leave me know. But how many, how many asymptotes is hyperbola? It's got two. Or two, right? So where does the other one come from?
It's the constant.
Yes, but why? So Achlak said that if this is the equation, then this is the asymptote. But why is that? Anybody want to give a? Anybody have an idea? This is very fun. If you want to understand this, you, it'll make so much sense why the graphs look like. So I'm spending time on this.
No, me, I was just gonna say, isn't it just because it's a y-value, it's going to be just a y-value, so it's going to be the horizontal line? Because there's no x, so it's going to...
But is x here? Why, why, why is this? So what are we saying? That Achlak said that five is the asymptote. What does that mean? It means y will never equal five. Right? Just like x will never equal minus one. So my question to you is, why does this graph never equal five? Why does the y-value never equal five? 10 seconds. Why does this, why does this y-value never equal five?
I don't know.
Anybody, anybody have an idea?
Can we say that the graph never touches the y-line?
The y, no, we agree, I agree, why does, why never equals five? My question is why?
Because it's an asymptote.
Why is it, why is that, why is it the asymptote? I'm not, I'm not playing with you guys, it's actually a reason that I'm waiting for. And it's a really beautiful reason. I can explain it. Does anybody have an idea? Let's explain it.
No idea.
Okay, do you guys agree that the, okay, we all agree the asymptote is y equals five? Because what is the graph of y equals five? It's horizontal line, right?
Yes.
Y equals, y equals, it's always horizontal line. Now, in this equation, for y to equal five, what must this be? In order for y to equal five, what must the value of this be? It must be zero. Can a fraction which has a constant of minus three ever be zero? What makes a number zero? A fraction zero? What makes a fraction zero equal zero?
When the numerator is zero.
Exactly. A fraction becomes zero when the numerator is zero. But what is this numerator? Is this numerator ever zero?
No.
No. And since this numerator is never zero, why can never equal five? Because this will never be not. How cool is that? Guys, just come on, how cool is that? How cool is that? Let's say it again.
Can you just, yeah, please just go through it one more time.
Say it again, yeah, okay, I'll say it again. Okay. So, we agree that y equals five is the asymptote. We agree with, everybody agree that, that is the asymptote. The asymptote, right?
Yes.
And this is the equation of the graph. And we want y to equal five, because we know that's the asymptote. But the only way that y can equal five is if this term is not. You guys agree?
Yes.
Only way y can equal five is if this is not, because it'll be y equals not plus five, which is five. So therefore, in order for y to equal five, this must be not. But this is a fraction. And in order for a fraction to be not, the numerator must be not. There's no other way. A fraction can only be not if the numerator is not. But in this fraction, the numerator is constant. It's minus three. And can minus three ever be not?
No.
No. And because minus three can never be not, the fraction can never be not. And since the fraction can never be not, why can never equal five? Does it make sense? I can say it again.
That makes sense.
It makes sense.
Okay, okay. But you see, but you see how cool it is now? Because now we're saying, we're saying firstly, x can never equal minus one, and we're saying y can never equal five. But what is the graph of y equals five? What's the graph of x equals minus one? So therefore, that's why these are your asymptotes. That's why the hyperbola looks like it does. X can never equal minus one, which is why the line x equals minus one is an asymptote. X, y can never equal five, because the line y equals five is not possible. Y can never equal five, because this as a denominator, a numerator of minus three. And of course, x can never equal minus one, because then this will be undefined. Are we happy?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, it's a different story if you put an x here. Because can this, can this be not now? Can the numerator be not?
Yes.
Yes, if x is? If x is zero. But you guys don't do graphs like this. So you don't have to worry, but I'm just, I'm just trying to illustrate the concept to you. That the reason, they just tell you, you've got asymptotes here, and asymptotes there. You just throw around this word asymptote. But this is why. And that's what I want you guys to understand. Okay, so now that we've done that, we can look at the question. Okay? Any questions so far? Are we good? Okay. And then I explained this in the concept video. If anybody wants to check out his hyperbola concept video in grade 10. Grade 10 hyperbola concept video. It's on the sections mind map. I explained this. Okay, so the graph of minus three over x plus one plus five, and they've got a graph of minus three x plus two. Okay? And they're asking you to calculate the range. Now, before we look at the questions, let's just understand this graph. So of course, we said the asymptote is going to be x equals minus one and y equals five. What is, what is this value over here? Why is this value over here important? Why, why is it, what is the function of this value? Minus.
To show the shape of the graph. Like we're in which quadrant they lie.
Yeah, yeah, right, Amaro, so it's the quadrants. So if it's positive, which quadrants?
So if it's positive, it's the first and the third.
Right, so it'll be like that. Okay? But because it's negative, it's going to be in the second and the fourth. Right? And that's why it's here. You guys all see that, okay? And then they give you the graph y equals minus three x plus two, which is just a normal straight line graph. But notice how it intersects over here. So we already know this point. What is this point on the graph? What is this point over here?
Negative one and five.
Right, because it's where the asymptotes intersect.
Yeah.
So the x-value is going to be minus one, and this y-value is going to be five, so therefore, the point is going to be minus one. Okay, good. So you're ready? And you can actually do that, because if you sub in minus one into here, what do you get? You get five. So it makes sense. Okay? Right, so now it's the range. What is the range again? Remind me, what is range?
All the y-values.
The y-values.
Well, okay, that's half the answer. What, what do you mean, all the y-values? What do you mean by all the y-values? Who, who said all the y-values? Why, why do you guys say all the y-values? What do you mean, but what do you mean by all the y-values?
The y-values from where the graph exists.
Yes, correct. So it's very important to say that, because all the y-values of what? You know, you kind of have to say, all the y-values where the graph exists. So does the graph exist when y is like six? Yes, because there's a point which has a y-value of six. Does the graph exist when y is like two? Yes, because there's a point. So all you just have to find is where, which y-values exist in the graph. That's your range. That's all that range means. And domain is the opposite, what x-values exist. Now, in the hyperbola, the range is going to be every single y-value except the y-value of the asymptote. Do you guys see that? It's, it's literally every y-value up and down, up and down, except for the asymptote. You guys all see that?
Yes.
Nafisa, I think Nafisa asked the question. Nafisa, do you, do you see how all the y-values exist?
Yes, I get it.
Okay. So, so therefore, your answer will be what? It's going to be y is an element of the real numbers, but y can't be five. And I told you why y can't be five, because this can never be not. So therefore, y can't equal five. Okay? Okay. Next question. Determine the coordinates of the point of intersection. So what, 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 what are we going to do for points of intersection? What do we always do?
Make the two graphs equal each other.
Yes. And anybody want to explain to me why you do that? Quickly? I think I explained in the last session. Why do you put the two graphs equal to each other?
Because that's where our y-values are equal.
Yes, because they share the same y-value, right? So if this is y and this is y, where they intersect, this y and this y is the same. Right? Where they intersect. And since those y's are the same, these must be the same. That's why you put the graph equal to each other. So you would say minus three over x plus one, actually, no, must be careful with that. Put brackets, minus three over x plus one plus five equals minus three x plus two. Okay, so what you can do is you can multiply by x plus one, so it becomes minus three plus five, brackets, x plus one, which is five x plus five, equals minus three x plus two. You put the x's on the one side, so it's eight x equals two minus five minus three minus six x equals minus two. Um, no, minus three over four. No, sorry, I made a mistake. I, I need to multiply this by um, x plus one as well. Yeah. Yeah. So then it becomes minus three, so we can add, so it becomes two plus five x um, equals minus, so this is going to be, so you can either put it in brackets, it's going to be the same thing, so I mean, you can multiply. Um, you can actually, you know, to make it easier for yourself, take the five over. So let's just, let's just start again. Take the five, so take, like, make everything like terms, so two minus five is going to be minus three, so now it becomes a lot easier. Now you just multiply by x plus one, so minus three equals minus three x minus three times x plus one. And then you'll just solve for this. Which, you know, you guys can do in your, in your spare time, because this is just going to be a normal quadratic equation. But you, but the main point is that you put the graphs equal to each other and you solve. And how many answers will you get? And why do you get two answers?
Because...
Looking at the graph, why, why would you get two answers?
There's um, two points on the graph.
Because it's two.
Why?
There's two points where the graphs intersect.
It's actually...
You guys see that? That's two points where the graphs intersect. So therefore, you'll get two answers. And what, and I told you it's a quadratic equation. And a quadratic equation always gives you two answers. Well, most of the time, the other times really gives you one answer. Uh, but that's just, uh, yeah, most of the time is two answers. Describe the transformation. Amaro, I want you to try this one. Okay, I don't think she's here. Oh, she's here, she's here. Amaro, I want you to try this one, because you answered in the beginning. What's the transformation going to be? What is the difference between this graph and this graph? Amaro, can you hear me? Yeah. So, how is this graph different to this graph?
And it's negative, the one and one is negative, that one's positive.
They're in two different quadrants?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So what's the transformation?
It's going to be... So basically, in one of them, a is negative and the other one...
A is positive. Right, so therefore, where is the graph going to be? It's going to be?
In the first one now.
In the first and the third.
Right. So what's the transformation? So when they want transformation, they want to, they want to hear reflection about a particular line. What line are you reflecting this along?
The... The horizontal, yeah.
Who says horizontal? I can't see you put up your hands. Who, okay, who says vertical? No one say vertical? So all of you saying horizontal?
I don't know.
So it's actually both. Both lines. I want you to look at the graph. Look, look at this graph. If you flip it around this line, do you see it still gives you that? But if you flip it along this line,
Same thing.
It gives you the same thing. Yeah. And mathematically, you can actually prove that. But it's fine, don't have to do that now. But basically, all you have to do is just, because remember, when, when, when this graph is exactly the same as this one, except you're just changing the minus. But, or you're just changing the x-values. The x-value of the one becomes negative x. So you can prove that. Okay, so is everybody happy? So is either reflection about the line x equals minus one or y equals five? Everybody happy with it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So do you guys understand now? So if, if anybody is feeling a bit unsure, the concept videos on, on hyperbolic functions are, it's quite in detail. Okay? Okay, let's look at the next question. So this question says, in the sketch alongside, PE is a tangent to the circle CEG. So where's BE? It's here, right? And it says that it's a tangent to the circle CEG. Yeah, so it's this one over here, and we can kind of see that over here, right? Okay? And you've got a, so you've got tangent, and it says AE equals EC. Okay? So what does that mean about the triangle AEC? If they say it's... Somebody said it?
Isosceles.
Yeah, isosceles, yeah. Um, so what does that mean? What can we deduce from that? So that's the maths, isosceles, what's the English?
So A...
What are the properties of isosceles?
Base angles are equal.
So therefore, therefore, this will equal x, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So just, you see, just from reading the question, you can already pick out things. So that the key words in this question for me are tangent and that these lines are equal. So, so what can we extract from tangent? We can extract things like tan chord. We can extract things like angle between tangent and radius is ninety. But there's no radii in this question, so you, you've got to be using tan chord theorem. And again, there are concept videos on tan chord that are, that go into it a lot more detail. Okay. So we said, so if we label x to be red, right? What else is going to be red? It's going to be C, right? What else?
Angle B.
Angle B, y angle B.
Because angles from...
Angles in same segment?
No.
No, it's angles from the same chord, but the actual reason.
It's the...
So, so, yeah, so you are right. Somebody said something? So, so Kaylee, you are right? But, but what's the theorem, what's the theorem you're using?
Converse tan chord.
Converse, uh, no.
No, it's because the, um, I forgot the actual reasoning, but lines coming from angles from the same line.
Angles from the same segment, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it, sorry.
Have you heard of equal chords obtain equal angles?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that one.
Yes.
But we, okay, but now, why does that mean that P is equal to C then?
Because AE is shared.
In the same line.
But it's different circles.
Oh, right.
So if, so, so that means G1, if anything.
G1 will equal...
Yes, oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, good thought, good thought. But, um, yeah. So what else, guys? Anything, anything else? Because they want four. They want four.
We can also say D, D, angle D is equal to angle C, because GE, that chord subtends C and E.
Do you guys see that? So, so this chord here is subtending this angle and this angle.
Would that also mean GAD is an isosceles? That triangle? Because AG and GD.
Good, I actually didn't pick that up. Well done, so...
I don't know if that helps us, but...
Well, I mean, maybe, because they can all catch the... Whoa, actually, okay. The second...
Oh, okay.
Okay. Somebody's mic is this loud. Yeah, okay. So, good, so answer the, the third question. Okay? Um, anything else, guys? They want two more. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Because last time on Saturday, there was an issue with the mic, so I was talking for like five minutes, and I never realized that nobody could hear what I was saying. And then I checked the chat afterwards, and it feels like I can't hear you, and then it was like horrible. So you must just stop me.
Can't we say that E4 is equal to G3?
E4 equals G, where's, sorry, I'm blind here. Okay? Yeah, yes. Why?
Angles in the same segment.
Do you, so what, which chord are they subtended by?
EC, isn't it?
Not EC?
CD.
CD, so it's an imaginary chord. Um, because you can see, yeah, so it's a good observation. But, uh, we need to find red. we need to find red. E2 is also red.
Isn't it because the tan chord theorem, the opposite of that?
Yes, the angle it's making with the chord, and that's red. Okay? So we need to find one more. Can you guys see anything else? Okay, we've got four other angles. Yeah, we've got four, we need one more. So using tan chord, we've got a, we've got a triangle. You've got chords. You guys see anything else?
Could you, oh, no. H1, contact E.
H1? Why do you say H1?
Because that's a tangent.
No, they don't say that it's a tangent, do they?
Is it, um, BE a tangent?
Yes, but it's, but it touches the circle, yeah.
The other circle.
Yeah. Maybe blue, red, blue, red, red, green. Is there anything else that we can use? Because the angles are equal. Red, green. Let's just call
Um, in the, in the textbook, the questions, answer the memo at the back, it says A2 is also equal to E.
Yeah, I was gonna say that now, because I made this angle yellow, so therefore, this must be red, because you can see that can you guys see here that this is red and this is blue, right? So I made this angle yellow. And if this is yellow, then this is also yellow, right?
Yeah.
You guys see that? So yellow, blue, red, yellow, blue. Red.
Wait, I don't get that. Why?
But how, how would we reason that?
Oh, because it's angles in
Angles in the same segment.
Yes, with E2.
Oh, okay.
I'm aware, I didn't see that.
Yeah, so, so you can see here, so I'm, I'm just labeling this angle as yellow. Therefore, this is also going to be yellow. And then because all angles must add up to 180, if you've got yellow, blue, yellow, blue, and the other one is red, therefore, this must also be red. So in in reality, in reality, it's, it's best to, in reality, it's best to obviously write angles and I'm just, the reason I use colors is because all I'm showing is what angles are the same. But obviously, I don't know, I don't think they will accept in your exam to have colors. But I feel like colors are a nice way, maybe they should do it like that, because, because you're not actually writing the actual angles, we just, we're saying which of them are the same. You see? And I think this is a nice way to teach it also. So now it says prove that AB over AG, okay, AB over AG equals AH over EC, so, so where's AB? So AB is here, so I always like sort of highlight the line, just so I know like what they're talking about, and AG is the okay, and AH is the, okay, 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 so AH is the and EC is, with EC. EC is the, okay, wow, okay. It seems like we might have to combine. So, guys, what I'm looking at here is, you kind of have to try and look at triangles here, you have to try and find triangles, because you have to basically find triangles which are similar. And that's how you can create these relationships. So when I see this formulation here, I'm seeing the blues, and I'm thinking, okay, maybe that's like a triangle, right? But when I see this yellow over here, this tells me, hey, maybe this is not. So that's why I'm thinking, can't we change EC to AE, because they're the same? Do you guys see that? EC and make it AE rather, because they're the same, because then it looks like, more like one triangle. Do you guys
Are they allowed to do that?
They're the same length. EC equals AE. So, so, so that's why, do you guys see how, how important it was realizing that this is an isosceles triangle? So I'm going to rather, I'm going to rather erase that and make AE my triangle, which is totally fine, because they're the same length. Okay? So let's try and find and see if they are similar. Are they similar?
Yes.
Why are they similar? Have they got one, have they got one angle, right, which is obvious?
And they have a similar, they have a, a common side.
Well, they say AG, eh? Not AH.
No, AE is the common, is that what you were saying?
No, but AH is the side and AG is the side.
Oh, right.
AB, and you've got AG. Oh, yes, yes.
The two angles, two blue.
BG equals GE, guys. Because they are equal chords obtain equal angles. BG and GE subten A2 and A1s respectively. So what does that mean about BG? And GE? It means they're the same length. So yes, yes, BG. BG subtends red. GE also subtends red. Do you see that? GE also subtends red. But they're both equal. Both angles are equal. And we said that equal chords obtain equal angles, or equal angles obtain equal chords. And since these angles are equal, these chords must be equal. Can say it again. Does anybody want to try explain it? Does anybody understand?
No.
And say it again, it's the, clearly. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I get it.
Okay, but wait, I'll say it again. So you can see here that we've got, do you agree that A2 equals A1?
Yes.
Okay. A2 is subtended by which chord? PG. Okay, do you see that?
Yes.
A1 is subtended by which chord?
EG.
EG. And there's a principle in circle geometry which says that equal chords subten equal angles. And since the angles are equal, the chords that are subtending, the chords that are subtending them
Are equal.
Must also be equal. So, we could say that this is now isosceles triangle. So therefore, this is also red. Because it's isosceles triangle. And, um, what else can we show? Because we basically have to find one more angle that is so we've got blue on eighty minus. Yeah, okay, so we
I feel like I've kind of lost the original question again. We have to prove that
So to prove that AB over AG
Yeah.
Equals, um, AH
Of EC.
Yeah, so yes. So BG is equal to GE, but that's, that's not part of the, I'm thinking maybe EG squared, that's probably the, the next question. But I'm just thinking to myself, we have to try and find two angles that are the same. And, um, let's just see if we can do that. Blue, yellow, red. AB over AG. Yellow equals red plus E1. Yes, yes, okay, okay, okay. Sure, okay, yeah, okay.
Sorry, sorry, what's the red plus E1?
I'm just, I was just doing that, I'm just doing it for myself.
Oh, okay, okay.
So guys, do you guys agree that the yellow using exterior angles theorem two equals the red plus the E1? Do you guys agree with it? Theorem two
Yellow.
Equals the red plus E1. Because this is one eighty minus that, so therefore, this must add up to that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, red plus E1. So yellow equals So everybody agree with that firstly? Wait, guys, just talk to me, talk to me. So what do you agree?
Yes, I get it, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
But in this triangle, if you apply the same rule, yellow equals red plus
Blue.
Not blue?
No.
They don't actually define the angle. But it's this angle over here. It's G, we can just say G4. You guys agree? Yellow equals G
Yes.
What does that mean about E1 and G4?
They equal.
They equal. So we can now write another angle, make it orange. And because they are equal, you've now got two angles which are equal, or red and orange.
Could you not just say, could you not just say that E1 equals G4, because also angles in same segment? Now that we can see, because we added the line.
Yes, this actually is true also. So you, so she's, she's saying that AB is a, is a common, um, is a chord. And because you've drawn this line there, therefore, they are the same. So it's actually, it's actually very similar reasoning, but actually, you're, you're always a bit faster. So you guys, you guys see AB is a chord, and it subtends this angle here. And, uh, AB is a chord and it subtends this angle here, so therefore, you've got E1 and G being the same. And therefore, you've got red and orange, red and orange, therefore, these triangles are, are similar. So now, do we, now that we've shown they're similar, how do we write the ratios? What we do is that we, I always start with one triangle. So I start with one triangle, so we can start with AB. So with the, so the blue triangle, I just write down the sides. And there's a concept video on this, but I just write down the sides. AB equals B, not, not, it's not like equals yet, it's BG. And AG. Do you guys see these are the three sides of the big tri, of, of the one triangle? Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
The three sides
Yes.
Of the, of the one triangle, BG and AG, right? Now, I find in the other triangle, the yellow triangle, I find the sides which are corresponding. And the way I know that they're corresponding is that they're opposite the same angle. So for example, BG is opposite which angle in the, in the blue triangle? Which angle?
A2.
It's the color.
Oh, pink, red.
Red, 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 right? So BG is opposite red. What's opposite red in the other triangle?
AG.
No, in the In the
E, they're HE.
EH.
EH, right? So that's what we write here. EH. Because they're opposite the same angle. So they caught, that's how we know the sides are corresponding, that they're opposite the same angle. BG is opposite red, EH is opposite red. So let's do AB, what's AB opposite in the big triangle? In the blue triangle, AB's opposite? What is AB opposite? Guys, what's, what's, what, what color is the angle that AB's opposite? Orange, right? Do you guys see orange?
Orange, yeah.
Now, what's opposite orange in the yellow?
A, AA.
AH. And then we can, just by process of elimination, say that it's gonna be A of AG. Uh, okay, so now, look at the question, they want AB, so we know we have to use this one. And they want AG, so we know we have to use that one. There's no BG, and there's no EH, right? So we can discard this ratio. You guys agree? There's no BG, so we can say AB over AH equals AG over AE. Yeah, it's but they want AB over AG, right? So what are we gonna, we're gonna divide? So it's AB over AG and multiply equals AH over AE. What's missing?
EC.
But what did we say?
That the, it's a the equal sides thing, and we made it.
AE equals EC.
Yes.
Therefore, we can replace that with EC. And that's done.
Yay.
So does anybody understand that process? So do you see how how at the start, I looked for the triangles? So I know which triangle I'm working with. That's why I never, it's why So I know which triangle I'm working with, that's why I never, it's why I didn't like the fact that we were doing, we were looking at E C. Because E C was all the way over here. So I, so I thought, okay, let's make it A E rather. So then makes a nice triangle like that. Do you guys see?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's a skill that I want you guys to package in your brain. Because it's going to come up again. With, they might give you another side, but you have to show that they are the same. Okay, let's remove that, yeah. Last question, okay, the second last question, so Kaylee answered the first question, which is A G equals G D, right? Because they are isosceles, because the angles are the same, so let me just erase that. And just make all of that the same. So Kaylee said that because these angles, A one and D are the same, that means that G D and A G are the same. Okay?
Yeah.
So that, I, I already know. They want to, they're going to need me to use that in this one. I just have a feeling that we're going to have to use that somehow. So now they're saying E G squared. But E G is also equal to B D, so G D over G, G D times, they want G D, sorry, G D which is where, G D is. So we also know that A G equals G, so A G. Equals G D. So they want E G squared. So they want E G. We can also say they, in a way, they want B G and they want G D. And they want G H, but we'll say G D is the same as, I'm just writing down all the sides here, so we can kind of make a sense for ourselves, like which one they want us to work with. So where's G H? G H is here. So that's interesting, so it's probably going to be a smaller triangle. So maybe it could be this triangle. Right? B G. B G, G H. Yeah, maybe. But they also want E G, okay, but E G is the same. But E G over. E G and G D, where's G D, G D, where's G D? G D is there, but G D is the same as A D, A G. Okay. Okay, because they probably want A G. But do you guys see, I'm just trying to figure out which triangles they want. Do you guys see that? I'm trying to figure out which triangles they want. So I'm thinking maybe this triangle here.
But wait, how do you know that you'll always be working with a triangle, just because of the question that they ask?
Because similarity always involves triangles.
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't see that.
So that's why I always try and find triangles, so that if I can prove that they're similar, then I, then I can generate these relationships. That should always be the goal in proportionality, to, to find triangles and see if you can prove that they're similar. So they mentioned G D, but I have a feeling this G D looks really out of place, right? It looks very out of place, so maybe instead of G D, let's use A G. Do you guys see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so Rishka, Navila, Naima, Akisa. You guys following?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So you, so you can see why I chose A G instead of G D. They're the same, but this seems like it's more related to the, the triangles that we're going to be working with. Okay?
Yes.
So E G squared, but E G, right, E G is here, right? But isn't E G just, B G is the same? So that's why I wrote B G here. But anyway, G H also can be this one. Because that, because G H could also be this one. Okay. So, or you could even use this other triangle, you can maybe make this the triangle, maybe that's what they want. You could even make it that one. And then that one. Do you guys see that?
Yes.
Are those triangles similar? Yes.
Yes.
Why are they similar?
They have a common side and they have.
Common angle, yeah, common angle.
Which is thirty eight.
The common angle is, is, is blue, eh?
Oh, yeah.
But they've both got a red. So therefore they are similar.
Yes.
Okay. I think someone is. Yeah. So, so now if they're similar, so again, guys, we're going to draw out the size, so let's choose the bigger triangle first, so we've got A G. G E. And.
E A.
And E A, E A sports, it's in the game. You guys, you guys.
You've kind of like lost me a bit along the way.
No, it's okay, no, it's good, so I've chosen B, so they want A G. Know that they want E G, right? And I'm seeing E G here. But they want two E Gs, do you see that? E G squared. So I'm thinking, let's choose a triangle that is two, two triangles that both have E G. And they also said G, both these triangles have E G. And they also mentioned G H, and G H is here, sorry. G H is there. So I'm thinking maybe this is the one G E and the one G H, so maybe this is a triangle, the black. But they also want G D. But we said that this G D looks out of place, right? So let's, let's rather write A G, because it's the same. So they want G E and A G, so doesn't this look like a triangle, the green? Kaylee, do you, do you see?
E, yes, but I'm still, sorry, I'm still not really seeing how it relates to the bigger picture. I understand everything that you said and as to why that like makes sense. But I'm just kind of struggling to link that to why E G is going to be squared and equal to the other ones.
I'm also not sure yet.
Oh, okay. It's just kind of like working towards that.
Yes, because I haven't solved this question yet, I'm just, I, I've seen it as you're seeing it, but I'm doing what I would do, what I would do when I see these types of questions, so.
It's kind of like trial and error as well.
Well, it's a little challenging, because you've got an approach, it's not like I'm guessing. But, but the thing is with proportionality, you've got to be prepared.
Yeah.
To change, because the first thing you try won't always work. The second thing you try might not work, so you've got to have different options. So, I first thought, let's use this triangle, but then I thought, no, it's not going to work, so let's use this one. The reason why I'm thinking of this triangle is because they want two E Gs, right? E Gs, so that means both triangles should actually have E G. Okay, they also want G D. But G D's here. And we, yeah, so let's make it G A. Right? Do you see that? We've got more information here. Kaylee?
Yes, yeah, sorry, I do see that.
So G E, G A, right? And they also want G H, so you've got a G H here and you've got a G E, so this looks like a triangle here. G H, G E.
Yes, yeah.
And you've got another triangle here. So let's see if we can prove that they're similar. And they are similar, because they've both got a red. And they've got a common blue.
Yes.
So now I'm writing the ratios. So A G over G, so I'm writing the first triangle, which is the big triangle, so it's A G, G E and E A. Okay. And now we have to ask ourselves, what did we say? How do we determine what's going to be at the bottom? What did we say?
The angle that's opposite.
Right, so what's, what's opposite, let's start with G E, what's opposite G in the big triangle?
Um, A one.
Other angle.
Yeah, so tell me the colors.
Oh, pink, red, sorry.
Yeah, right, so what's opposite red in the small triangle?
G E, oh, small one, sorry, yellow, wait, what?
So what's opposite red in the G E, so take.
Oh, H, I mean H G, sorry.
Yeah, right, G H, right? Does anybody understand that? They're both opposite reds. G is opposite red in the big triangle and in the small triangle, G H is opposite red. Right, E A is opposite?
E A is blue.
Blue.
Blue, yeah.
And what's opposite blue in the small?
H E.
H E, and therefore by process of elimination, what's A G over?
A G. G E.
G E.
Yeah, G E.
Now, which, which of these ratios are we going to work with? Are we going to work with A G? Yes, definitely, because A G is G D. And they want G D in the answer. G E is definitely, because they want E G in the answer. E over A G? Nah. So we just got to work with those two. And you can kind of see what's going to happen here. Multiply by the G Es. Equals A G times G H. But what is A G equal to?
G D.
Oh, yeah.
So do you, so do you see how we do it?
Yes, yeah.
So, so do you see, it's all about finding triangles. Trying to find triangles, because whenever they ask you to prove relationships, think triangles, think proportionality, think similarity. You can't prove that things are similar if you don't have a triangle. That's why you have to find the triangles. And this was a difficult question. But I don't, but the thing is, I think what students, after students in exams, they panic. When it doesn't work out the first time. And I'm telling you now, it's a good chance it won't work out the first time. Because it happened to me now, it didn't work out the first time. But you've got to have different approaches, that's the point with proportionality, there is no one method. That will always work, so you've got to have multiple methods. And that's, that's, and I think that's why proportionality is probably one of, for me, the most difficult section in the, in the exam, because you can't really like, just memorize it. Other sections you can, to an extent, memorize solutions, this one you have to think. And you have to know your, your work well. So, yeah, let's, so let's, so we've done it. So is everybody happy, anybody have any other questions?
No.
Okay. And by the way, this is recorded, so if you want to come back. Ah, luck, I see, he's not here. This is a concept video on this question. Do you guys see this question here? How to create the trig identities? They are concept videos on this. There's a concept video on this, on the trigonometry, so I'll let you guys watch that one. Let's go on to this question. So we've got a nice, okay, how many of you guys have done calculus? How many of you guys have done calculus?
Briefly.
Who hasn't done calculus?
I haven't done it, but I watched like a few of your videos and stuff, so I know a little, but I don't really know much.
Okay, that's fine, does anybody have no idea what we're talking about? Calculus. Is anybody not done calculus at all?
No.
I feel like I don't remember much, so I'm going to say me, because I did it like last year.
Oh, okay. That's fine. How did you find the concept video, Navila?
It's, it was, it was quite nice, because it gave me like a bit of an understanding. But I think because it was my first time, it was like, I'm still not like, I didn't get like the pang of it properly.
Yeah, that's why I think you have to watch it maybe one or two times to sort of reinforce it. Okay, so, so I will start from the beginning, just to make sure, just to, and it can be revision for those who know it. So the graphs of, this is a cubic function, right? Because you've got X to the power of.
Sorry.
Okay. Please do.
Thanks.
Leave it, yeah, okay. So Y equals six X minus six is a straight line graph. And it says there, you've got some X intercepts. Okay. By the way, how do we find X intercepts? You make Y zero, right? Because you can see that whenever you have X intercept, the Y is zero. So the corresponding X value, whenever you make Y zero, is always going to be the intercept, okay? The graph has a turning point at A and B. Where's B? Oh, it's cut off. Let's just complete the graph there. No. Okay. Yeah, okay, so that's B, okay. So now I'm gonna, I'm going to just, so when I look at these types of questions. They are like keywords, they are like trigger words, that like, when I see them, my brain automatically tells me something. And that's, that's what I want you guys to get to, where, and I told, I tell, we've got this all the time. Maths is a language, okay? And you have to, and when you see questions in maths, you constantly have to be able to translate between maths and English. Okay, so they might write something in maths for you, but that means something in English. Or they could say something in English, and you have to translate that and say what mathematically, what does that mean? Okay? And this, this applies to all maths, but specifically in calculus. And I'll show you what I mean. When they say the X intercept is minus one, I already think to myself, why is Y equals zero? To solve for that, so, so I've got points here. They tell me the turning point is A and B, that's English, but in calculus language, the turning point means derivative equals naught. Do you guys see what I mean? The, the English is, is turning point at A and B. But the maths, derivative is naught at A and B.
Yeah.
Is there? You. Haven't said anything in a while, is there, you still there?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay. By the way, what is the, what is the derivative mean? What is the derivative?
The gradient.
It's the gradient, right? Now, Naima, I think you were here the other day on Saturday. What did we say about the gradient? Why can't, like, when you asked me the gradient, why can't I just say like five is the gradient? Why can't I say that, Naima?
Because the gradient is not the same.
Because the gradient is not the same on the graph.
Yes, yes, yes. So there's only one graph where the gradient is always the same. And that is a straight line graph. Every other graph you encounter in maths, the gradient changes. And this graph is one of them, the cubic graph. And you guys can see that the gradient changes. So therefore, if I were to ask you, what's the gradient of this graph? You can't say to me like six. Like seven or minus twenty. No, because the gradient is not the same. So rather, what calculus does is that it defines the gradient in terms of X. And that's the derivative. So you could sub in any value of X into that function. And that function would tell you the gradient at that point. That is the derivative. So for example, um, if I told you the derivative of this graph, it's not, it's not this, but if we just said it was X squared plus five, that's the derivative. And I asked you, what is the derivative when X is five? You sub five into here and you get thirty. So that means when the X value is five, the derivative, the gradient is thirty.
Thirty.
Okay, so that's all, that's, that's all the derivative is. It's literally just a way to tell you the gradient of the graph at any point. But they can't just say six or seven, because the gradient changes. So that's why they, they define the gradient in terms of X. Do you guys all understand that?
Yes.
They have to define it in terms of X, because at every value of X, you've got a different gradient. So rather define it in terms of X. And when they, and when you choose X to be minus one, the gradient is naught. Why? Because if you draw a tangent, it's horizontal line. And the gradient of the tangent is, uh, gradient of horizontal, the gradient of horizontal line.
Zero.
Is zero. So that's why if you ever want to find a turning point, you make the derivative equal to naught. In other words, you ask the equation, please tell me equation, tell me where on the graph, what value of X will the gradient be naught? Why? Because the gradient is naught at the turning point. Just to extend you guys a bit, just to explore the concept. You won't do this in school, but I'm just showing you this just to make you like understand and appreciate what we mean by derivative. If I were to ask you, what's the derivative of the circle? Look, what the flip is this guy talking about? Like, what is this guy on, like, we have, so do you guys see how for every X value on the circle, there's two Y values? Do you see that?
Yeah.
For every X value, there's two Y value, except for over here. And tell me the gradient over here, it's gonna be like this and like that. Do you guys see that?
Mm hmm.
Are those gradients the same?
No.
No. So you, when you find the gradient of this graph, you can't just define it in terms of X. Because they are, at this X value, there are two different gradients. Do you guys see that? At one X value, there's two different gradients.
Yeah.
So that's why when you find the gradient of a circle, you will define it in terms of X and Y. The gradient has Y in it also, the derivative has Y also, because you need to know the Y value as well to tell you the gradient. But in this graph, every X value only equals, only has one Y value. Have you guys heard of the definition of a function? What's the definition of a function?
For every X value, there must be one Y value.
So what, so do you understand why the circle's not a function?
Yeah, because there's two Y values.
With these two Y values. So that's why, so that's why you can define the gradient in terms of X. Because it's only one Y value for every X value. So there's only gonna be one gradient for every X value.
Can you say that again?
There's only one Y value for every X value. Which means there's only one point for every X value.
Okay.
And since there's only one Y value, only one point for every X value, there can only be one gradient. Whereas with the circle, at one X value, there are two Y values, which means there are two gradients. So therefore, with the circle, you can't just rely on X to tell you the gradient. You rely on X and Y. But in this function, because there's only one Y value for every X value, you can just use X. You don't need Y to tell you the gradient.
Oh, that makes sense.
So this is what I want you guys to, to understand. That, um, yeah, okay. So let's look at the question. So, okay, you've got a Y intercept, okay, at D. And that's also where the graph touches. So there's a point of intersection, right? Do you guys see that?
Yes.
So you actually have a point on the cubic graph. Do you guys see that? You actually have a point. Because.
Wait, a point of intersection? Oh, with the straight line? Or are you talking about with the Y axis?
Same thing. So, so at the same point, so they intersect at the Y intercept.
Hmm.
Okay. So I, I feel like that will help us. Okay. What are the question, what's the question of the law? What's the question? Oh, it's on the, oh, it's the next, okay, sorry, sorry. Sorry, I thought we have the question. Um. Okay. No, I copied the wrong one. Which question? Okay. Okay, show that A, this is a common question, guys, and we've made lots of videos on this. So for those of you who joined late, Teutonic has made a bank where you can literally go to every single section and find the questions Teutonic has made. So these question of cubic graph, look here, you've got lots of questions on cubic graphs. So you guys can literally watch, do these questions, watch the video. And so look here, look here, guys, see, show that A equals two, B equals two. Do you guys see that? That's a similar type of question to the one that you've just asked me. So I'm obviously gonna do this with you, but there are lots of other questions that I want you to work through on the bank. So you can start making connections. And you'll start realizing how the concepts come together quite nicely, okay? So obviously, come to the live session, but also go through the concept videos and the, the bank, okay? So what I do is for these types of questions, I use the information. They want four variables, right? So you need four pieces of information. Doesn't that make sense?
Sorry, your voice kind of like lagged a bit for me. I don't know if anyone else.
And now, and now?
It's fine now, it was just like a second when you were saying something, but.
Okay, it's fine, it happens. Um. Um, there are four things they want, right? Four things that they want. They are four variables, four letters, right? So because they want four letters, you need four pieces of information. Do you guys agree?
Yes.
In other words, four equations, in a way. The first one is easy. They say D must be minus six. Why is D minus six?
Because it's the intercept.
Because.
The Y intercept. It's given, a point is given, so it's DC zero negative six, but D is also Y, the Y value of the function.
Exactly. So we've got D, right? So you can say D is minus six, because it's the Y intercept. Right? So do you see how important it is to identify that you've got a point there? Now, the others. So again, you need three pieces of information. So what are the three pieces of information that you know?
They give you the. And any other point.
See, I, I want three pieces of information. So what's the, I'll write one, two, three. What's the three pieces of information that they gave you?
Okay, so they give you the two X root, the roots, I think, the X values.
Intercepts.
You say, yeah, you say the roots, yeah, that's right. Root is X intercept. Um, so you've got the X intercept one, X intercept two, what's the third piece of information?
It's the same as the turning point.
Exactly. So what does that mean?
It means that we have used that formula, where in it's um AX minus X one, and then close brackets, open another bracket, X minus X two squared.
So that, that is for quadratic equations. I know what you mean, where you've got the X intercepts. But that you, that, you're talking about this equation, right? Y equals A X minus, X minus X one, X minus X two, right?
Where?
Amaro, you're talking about this one?
No, you must quit the second bracket. X minus X two, and then this is squared.
Yeah, okay, I see what you mean. You can actually do that. But where did you get that equation?
Um.
Is it on the middle?
I learned that.
Oh, did they teach you this equation?
Yeah.
Other people, Kaylee, Navira, have you?
That's to find the roots. Yeah, no, we've been given that, not taught it, but yeah.
But this one, where you've got X minus X two squared, have you been given that?
Oh, no, I didn't see that squared, uh-uh.
Now this one? Guys?
Yes, I've seen. We, we were taught that, and then you just sub in the roots, and then you plug in the point, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, to find the value of A.
Why is it squared? They tell you why it's squared.
Yeah.
Is the formula, I don't know, they can't do.
Is it not?
In X values, the same as the turning point, that's why it's squared.
Um, okay. So what if the graph was shifted up? And you had three X intercepts, what would the equation be then? It wouldn't be squared anymore.
No, then the equation would change. So then instead of X minus X two squared, instead of this, you would add one more bracket, which is X minus X three.
Yeah, yeah, because you guys understand that, right? So the only reason it's squared is because you've got two. Yeah, so I don't really, I did actually taught students this before, but basically, whenever you've got a square in a cubic function, that tells you that we, in, 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 you don't have to know this, but we call this a bounce point. Have you heard of this before? Bounce point?
No.
No.
So a bounce point is a, is, is a point where something is both an X intercept and it's a turning point. So it almost looks like it's bouncing off the X intercept. Do you guys see that? It's like it's bouncing, it's not going through, it's like it's jumping like a ball jumps, you know, like. Um, so, so basically, a bounce point always happens when you've got a squared. So if I gave you the, if I gave you an equation like this, um, X plus, can you see the blue? Okay, I'm gonna change it to red. If I give an equation, X plus one times X minus two squared, this is a cubic function, right? Because X cubed. But this graph would have X intercept minus one and a bounce point at, at two.
Oh, that actually makes sense.
Because it's gonna be both an X intercept and a turn point.
Hmm.
And the reason for that, I don't, I don't really want to tell you, because it's, it's a bit more, um, you have to use something else to prove it. But, um, Amaro, your equation is correct. I was just going to, okay, fine, yeah, I mean, but the thing is, how are you gonna find, you can sub in a, yeah, but, okay. So you're gonna sub in.
You have another way to do this.
I've, yeah, I have another way, but we can do your way, it's fine, it will still work, I think, but, um. So you will get. Although, let's do, you can do both ways, we see our, because I wanna show you guys both ways, so, because I've, your way, I, I don't usually do it.
Yeah.
But I, but it's, it's not because it's wrong. It's just.
Yeah.
Everybody has their own preference.
Yeah, no, because I, I used my formula, right? So I tried doing it before, and I got something else. So that's why.
Oh, okay. It should, you shouldn't have.
Yeah.
But what did you substitute for X two? Did you substitute three or minus one?
Minus one.
Minus one, because that's the bounce point, right? Okay, so, okay, so we'll, we'll see, let's see, let's see if I get the same answer. Um. Okay. Just, yeah. Okay, so I'm going to, so the three pieces of information is the X intercept and it's the turning point, right? That's the third piece of information. So what do we know about the turning point? We know the turning point is when the derivative is naught. Correct? So let's find, it does find the derivative. Once you do it for me. It's actually quite easy, that's actually, no, it's not that, it's just still. Everyone happy?
Yeah.
And we are saying.
Wait, why did you write, why did you write, never mind, wait, what? Never mind, sorry.
Multiply by the three AX, then you subject by one. Okay? And if we.
Wait, I'm kinda confused now. Isn't three A and two B? Why did you keep an A and B?
Because we didn't find the values.
Oh, wait, no, but isn't.
Stop proving that A and B.
Oh, I thought that was the thing they gave you. Okay, sorry, never mind, just ignore me.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, I still, okay. Everybody happy with this so far?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. We are saying that when is this true, at which X value is this true? Is, is this statement true, at which X value?
At, um, three and negative one.
Not three, not three, not three. Three is the X intercept.
Oh, the turning point at negative one and, and B.
Yeah, but we don't know B, so we're just gonna sub in negative one. So it's gonna be three A times minus one squared, which is just one. Minus two B plus C equals naught. Right? Then, so just from knowing that the turning point is there, we've got one equation, that's equation one. Equation two, we sub in the X intercepts. Right? So we make Y naught, so we get naught equals, we can sub in minus one. Right? So we make Y not, so we get not equals, we can sub in minus one. So what's eight times minus one cubes?
Minus.
It's just two. Hmm, mine.
I'm subbing in minus one. I'm subbing in minus one. Yeah?
Yeah, plus B.
Plus B, yeah?
Minus C.
Minus C. And indeed. Minus C.
It would be, um, we have that, which we proved that it is, isn't it?
Which is minus six.
Six, yeah.
So we could say that that equals six. If we take the six over. Okay? How can we deal with this equation? Or we just do this rather? How can we immediately make our lives easier with these two equations?
Equally. Oh, elimination, isn't it? Hmm.
How could, what what are you going to do to the equations?
That we subtract the one from the other.
Don't subtract, no. Don't subtract them. If this was plus C, then you subtract them. But if it's minus.
When would you subtract?
You would subtract them if they've got C and C. But you've got C and minus C. So what must you do to get rid of the C?
You add them.
You add them, right? So it becomes three A plus minus A is two A. Minus two B plus B is?
Minus B.
Minus B.
You guys see that?
It goes six.
Equals six, right? So we narrowing it down, we narrowing it down. Head to the other X intercept. Three. What did we get? It's going to be. A times. Sorry, the other, yeah. So we make Y not, so it's not equals. A times three squared, which is twenty seven A. Plus.
Nine E.
Plus.
Three E.
Equals six.
Yeah.
No, wait, this is three C. Sorry, it looks like thirty six. Okay, equals six. What can we do now? Can we work with, can we maybe work with this one? Can we maybe? Do something here? How would you guys, is it something that we can do to make it easier for ourselves?
Can you question?
What can you do to this equation to be able to cancel out stuff?
You divide the top one by three.
Yes.
And then you, then you have the Cs that you can cancel out, also subtract each other.
So, so what's twenty seven divided by three?
Is nine.
Do you guys see what she's doing?
And then three B and C.
Do you guys see what we've got here? Look what, so look, look how much easier it looks now. Because now what, what now what can she do?
Add.
You add them, right? Because it's C and minus C. So what's nine? So it's eight A.
Less four B. Equals to eight.
And now?
You divide the top one by four.
Okay, so it becomes two A.
Less B equals to four. I mean, two, sorry.
And now?
You add.
You have two options. You can add them.
Which will give you four A. Which equals to eight. I mean, A equals to four.
No.
A equals to two, sorry.
It's that time of the day. Um.
And you can find B.
Amaro, is it making sense?
Um. Can I say something?
Yes, guys can try.
Okay, so, okay, so the method that Amaro's in, the X squared one. That one is like so much easier for me because here, isn't it like longer because you like ma- must like minus all the time and then add it again? And?
Yeah.
Because it gives you.
We haven't.
Because.
Away yet, yeah.
I did it and I got two. But then I don't know how to sub it back into, like, where do I sub the A back into what formula?
You probably, yeah, we'd have to sub it into this formula, unfortunately.
But then I have. Two unknowns because I have A, but then I don't have B and C.
But you can do the turning point equation.
Which is, oh, okay, okay, got it. I'm going to try that.
So, so that way, you said, see, both ways, you could have to end up doing something like this. How many marks is is this? It's five marks. So it is quite, you know, they want you to do a lot of work. So. Yeah, so what is B going to be? Four minus two, right? And then C. Minus two plus two. Minus two, minus four. Ten, minus ten, yeah. So you guys, we're always doing this, subbing it in back into these. Once you have one, everything else just falls back into place. And then we get the equation. Okay, is everybody happy?
Yeah.
Happy.
Okay. Right, so let's go back. And the nice thing is that they tell you what the answer should be. So you at least, uh. You at least know what you're looking for. Okay.
Could you try to the the other way?
Yeah, I can. Uh, but but basically, okay, so you would have got your answer of two, right? A to B two, right? Did you get A equals two?
Yeah.
So then you would write your new equation, three A X squared. Plus two B X. Plus C equals not, because the derivative must equal not. And you know A is two, so it's going to be six X squared. And then you sub in X to B minus one, so it's six. Uh, minus two B plus C equals not. So that would be. And it's, that's your first, that's your first equation. And then you would, you could sub your. Um. You could sub. These points back in the X intercepts. So that's the thing. I think with this one. You're going to have to do the same thing over again. Because now you're just going to sub in your X intercepts. Separately. But I think the first way is probably. The best way.
Oh, okay, because I didn't do it like that.
Okay. But at least you know, now you know there's a different way to do it. So. But I mean, for me also, next time I see a question like this, I will look at that. And. That's why you you mustn't get into the habit of. Being like, thinking, okay, if this is the question and that's the method. My, I think it's best to have a, like, a couple approaches that you come across after doing lots of questions. And then you just see which one works. Because sometimes you might get stuck and you say, okay, what am I going to do? Because this is the method I've always been using, right? So that's why sometimes the methods don't always work. So you have to have options. Okay. Now it says the turning point of P. And do you guys agree we can just take the derivative, make it equal to not?
Yes.
So you just write out this equation. It's. Y equals two X cubed. Minus two X squared, minus ten X, minus six. Right? Sorry for that writing. Derivative is going to be six X squared.
Minus four X. Minus ten.
You can divide out. Five must be there. Three must be there. X must be there. One must be there. Um.
There's a plus one and a minus five. No, yeah.
Yeah. Are you guys all comfortable with factorizing trinomials?
Yeah.
Okay, so then X equals minus one, which we know. And then X equals. Five over three. So therefore, B's coordinate. Is five over three, but how do we find the Y value? Do we sub it in here?
The original one.
You sub it into the original one, right? So so some people, what are you going to get if you sub it in here?
Just your X's again, wouldn't you?
What would you get if you subbed it in here? What would the answer be? It would be zero.
Zero.
Because you just solved for what makes it zero. Because remember, this equation doesn't tell you the Y value. This equation tells you the gradient. So you, when you sub in five over three, it's going to tell you, it's like you're telling the equation, equation, please tell me. The gradient of the graph when X is five over three. I say, okay, okay, let me just check you. And this is the gradient is is not. So that means the gradient is not. So that's why it's important to know what the equation is there for. You know, don't just know the, like, know what the equation means, right? Okay. Now it's his point of inflection. What's the point of inflection? Okay, so what's the second derivative of this one?
It's going to be twelve X minus four.
Yeah, so that's the thing, one twelve X minus four equals.
Zero.
Therefore. Okay. Um. So therefore, at X equals a third, which is kind of like, yeah, right? Kind of, not kind of like, yeah, actually. Does everybody know what we mean by point of inflection? Do you guys see I'm drawing the tangents to this graph? Look at what happens over here. The tangents go from being above the graph.
To below.
You could lower the graph. And the point where that happens, we call it the point of inflection. Okay? And you find the point of inflection, the X value of the point of inflection, by making the second derivative not. And this is also in the concept, concept video. Uh, for which value, okay, this is a nice question. I like this, these types of questions. Uh, for which values is the, is F dash X greater than not? So that's maths, right? What is, what is the English of that?
For which value is X higher, I mean, a positive number, higher than zero?
No.
I mean, the derivative, the derivative, not X, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So just rephrase that nicely.
So for which, yeah, for which values is the derivative a positive?
And what did we say? Derivative is a nice way for to say?
Oh, the gra- eh, the gradient.
Right. So they're asking you which values of X, for which values of X is my derivative positive? My gradient positive.
Hmm.
Okay? And you can tell that by drawing the tangents. What's the gradient of the tangent here? Positive or negative?
Positive. I mean, yeah.
Negative.
How do you know it's positive?
No, it's positive because of the concave. Because it's concave up.
Um.
I'm going to propose a slope is.
No, it's because the tangent's going up.
Yeah.
Then it's increasing.
If it went down, if it was like that, then it's negative.
And at that point, it's increasing. So it's like concave.
Yes, but remember, it's it's concave up until here. Actually, let's know, it's actually, it's um. It's concave down here. And Amaro. But we'll get to that, we'll get to that. Um. So it's, it's, sorry, I've lost my train of thought. It's asking, where's the gradient positive? So over here, is the gradient positive or negative?
Positive.
Positive. And then what happens here?
Negative.
Negative.
Zero, equal to zero.
Because it's a.
Turning.
Turning.
And then here?
Into negative.
Negative.
So just, just keep on saying it's.
Negative, 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 negative. And then. Positive.
Positive.
Negative.
Negative.
Positive.
Okay, so you guys get the idea, right?
Yeah.
So answer the question for me. Which values of X is the gradient bigger than not?
Oh, if X is. Less than negative one and greater than one over three.
No, not one of the three.
Why not one over three?
Five. Because it's, yeah. This is one.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the other point, okay.
Does everybody understand that? Because to the right of this, the gradient's positive, and to the left of this, the gradient's positive.
Yeah.
Okay. So you see, this, this question looks really complicated, but like. It actually is asking you a very simple question. Where is my gradient positive? On the graph. So you, so I, what I do, I put my finger along the X axis. And I move along and I say, does this? Does the statement, is the statement true over here? True? Yes, 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 yes. No, 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 no. Yes. You guys see that? So that's a nice way to do it on the number lines. On a number line, you could even draw a number line, do it like this, and say. Okay, here's my turning points, the gradient is positive, and negative, and positive. So therefore, it must be less than this and greater than that.
Yeah, I do that for.
Okay. And this is also how you can plot a cubic graph. Without, this is how you can sketch a cubic graph, and I think I made a concept video on this. Anyway. Um, give the coordinates of the turning point of H of X, if H of X is F of X plus three. Well, what does that mean? Does anybody know what this means? What does F of X plus three mean?
You should. Yeah. We shift up and down.
No.
Are we shifting it up? Is it, okay, what type of shift is it?
Oh, shifting.
Up or down?
Wait.
Is it up?
Wait, isn't this one the one which is vertically?
So it's vertical, isn't it?
Okay, is it a vertical or horizontal shift?
Vertical.
No.
No, I don't know, no.
No.
No, it's vertical.
I think it's vertical.
It's horizontal because it was, it was like this.
It will be added.
Remember, remember.
Yeah.
But if it's in the brackets, it's horizontal. That, so simply, it's horizontal shift, but is it left or right?
It is.
Left.
Left.
Yes, by how much?
And three.
So answer the question for me.
Turning point of H of X. Turning point of H of x. It will be
Negative three, to negative six.
Negative four.
Oh, never mind.
Where's the turning point currently? So you have to know where it is currently.
One.
Right?
Go to negative four.
Correct, and the other turning point?
It will go
Three and zero, so zero and zero.
No, 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 that's, that's x-intercept.
Oh, no, never mind.
It will go to negative four with three.
Right, so do you guys see how easy the question becomes when you understand it? So, so, I, from my experience teaching maths, students, the biggest problem is that students don't understand what, what the question's asking. Because once I tell them, this is what the question's asking, then they get it right. But they don't, they don't know how to read this. So this is mathematics, and you have to translate this to English. And it's so simple, all they're saying, they're taking the f of gra, f graph, which is this, and they're moving it to the left by three. And where's the new turning point? So if the turning point is here, it's just gonna be minus four, and if it's here, it's gonna be?
Negative four with three.
So do you guys see, it's quite, it's quite quite simple. If you understand, so that's why, so, and also, guys, there's actually lots of questions on this. If you go to the bank, you'll see there's a, is a under functions, do you see, there's a, there's a folder called values of variables satisfy a particular statement? There's lots of questions like these, so is this one, so you can practice, okay? You can practice these types of questions. And there's the memo, not the memo, but the video next to it, so you can test if you got it right. Okay, and there's also other, like, do you guys remember, if, of the vertical between two functions? When you subtract the two functions, the vertical distance?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
This is a question like that, you can practice, and here's another one. So there's, so, these are all questions that we've been asked over the years, and you've just, we just made it really nice and packaged, so you can work through them. And then you've got the videos next to it. Okay, are there any other questions? Any concepts, anything that you're not sure about? Are you happy that we moved it to Monday?
I have a question.
Okay, sure, sure.
Sorry, when they say like, draw a graph based on a stationary point of inflection, I don't get that at all. Like, if they give you two x cubed, and then they say draw the graph, then how do you do that?
So you're asking, how do you draw a cubic graph?
No, to draw a graph based on a point of inflection. When they give you the second derivative, and they say
Do you have an example, do you have an example?
Yes.
Sure, then post it on the group, they, they'll do it.
Okay.
Any other questions in the line?
No.
Yes, so you got, yes, yes, I'm all, yeah.
Okay, so, so, for example, we have to find a derivative, but that's like questions like the other question, not for the cubic, it is on the cubic functions, but it's like, just to determine dx. But they give us a trinomial, so it's a, it's a fraction, they give us a trinomial on the top, and then they'll just give us like, maybe x minus two, or, yeah, or three minus six, something like that. So normally, you always factorize it, and then you cancel the top and the bottom because they're the same. So is there a way, instead of factorizing the top, the numerator?
Can you just repeat the question? I was, I was trying to follow, just to say it again.
Okay, so say, for example, we have to find the derivative, or they will give us, it's a fraction, so two x
Okay, so the function is a fraction.
Um, no, it's actually, they, they just give us to find, it's like dx.
dy by dx, you mean?
Yeah. So
Oh, okay, are you asking how to find the derivatives?
No, I'm asking, so my question, okay, like, I'll, I'll just send something on the group, so they can see.
Yeah, I mean, I can see it visually, cuz I'm, yeah, difficult to
Yeah.
Nafisa, did you find your question?
Okay, so I said it?
Yes, I did, I will send it now, now.
So say, for example, you, what you do is, when you have those kind of questions, you factorize it. You factorize it, and then you end up cancelling the top and the bottom. What my question is, is there another way of doing it instead of factorizing it?
There is a way, but it's not in your syllabus, it's called quotient rule, you can read about it. So basically, imagine if this is, if this is A and this is B, right? If I remember correctly. So if this is your function, then this is your gra, your derivative, right? You know, you're familiar with this notation.
Yeah.
Okay, so quotient rule says, if you want to find the derivative, you say A dash B minus A B dash over B squared. Ah, that's a lot more complicated. But, but if they give you, if they give you a more complex one, but this, this, you really don't have to know this now. If you want to do more advanced maths, then, then they will teach you the quotient rule, there's also something called chain rule, and because remember, you, you've been taught how to find derivative, but you've only been taught one way, but there's actually quite a number of ways. But for your purposes right now, factorize is, is the best thing, they can't, they can't ask you more than that. That's the thing, they can't ask you, because this would be unfair, because they haven't taught it to you. I mean, they can only, that's the thing with maths, they can only ask you things that you can answer. They'll, if you look at the most difficult questions in your task, in your papers, you will realize that all of it is actually stuff you have been taught, it's just been asked maybe in a different way, but it's the same concept. And that's why I say to people that in maths, your concepts, you've got concepts, and you've got questions. Your concept and your questions, what, do your, do your concepts ever change in maths, in high school? No, they stay the same. Do the questions change?
Yes.
Yes, so what makes sense to do first?
The concept.
The concepts, because those always stay the same. So that's why we, we say focus on the concept videos, and make those that your foundation. So that when you go to the questions, it doesn't matter how they change it. You've got the concepts. You see, that's why you guys can, you know, I'm in a position where I have a reasonably good understanding of the concepts, so it doesn't matter what question you ask me. I haven't seen the questions you've asked, you, I asked you to send it now, but because for me, the concepts are strong, it doesn't matter which question you ask, because this is the foundation. You see, but if you make this the foundation, then you will struggle, because this always changes. And, and each, every time you answer a question, it requires this. So that's why, Tietonic, we say, make this the foundation. And then from there, build to that. But I, what I've noticed, a lot of students, they jump to the questions in the past papers, and then they start memorizing the memo for the past papers. And then at the end, they wanna learn the concepts. You know, so, so it needs to be the other way around. Why, why did I say that? I don't know why I was, I don't know what, but okay, anyway, let's just go on. Okay, Nafisa's question. But does it make sense why I said this?
Yes.
Are you guys inspired to watch the concept videos? Okay. Because you've got a cubic function, right? Two x cubed, right? Now, they say a stationary point of inflection. This is just a fancy way of saying that where I have a stationary point. So a stationary point is another way of saying turning point, right? Have you guys been taught that?
Yes.
Have you said, have you been taught that?
Yes, I have.
Okay, it's just a it's better to say stationary point in calculus. It's better to say stationary point, because not every stationary point turns. Do you agree? Look what happens here. Here, the derivative is naught. But the graph is not turning. So it's always better to say stationary point. Okay. A stationary point of inflection means that where I have a stationary point, the gla, the graph also has a point of inflection. That's all that it means, because look what happens here, here's my tangent, is it above or below the graph? Hello?
Below.
It's, it's above the graph. You see? Here's my graph, and here's the tangents, they're above the graph.
Oh, okay.
You see? Look what happens after the turning point.
Oh, okay, change cuz below the graph now.
Right, so where we've got a turning point, we've also got a point of inflection. And that's what they mean by a stationary point of inflection. It's a point of inflection that also happens to be a stationary point.
Wait, what was the question?
Yeah, 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 actually, what is the question?
Oh, no, they just asked you to draw the graph, and they gave you that equation.
Oh.
Oh, but you're, cuz you're giving me the memo.
Yeah, so basically, in the question paper, they gave y is equal to two x.
Yeah.
And then they just said, draw the graph.
Yeah, okay, so how do you, so they're asking, how do you sketch? So what I do, when it comes to a cubic graph, I, number one, find the x-intercepts. So where's the x-intercept here? What's the x-intercept gonna be?
The origin. So zero, zero, no.
Do you guys agree?
Three, zero, yeah.
Cuz it's naught, okay? Then I ask myself, where are the turning points? So how do you find the turning points?
The second derivative.
The derivative.
The first derivative.
First derivative, okay?
Yeah.
What's the first derivative?
Six.
Six x squared.
Equals?
Y.
Zero.
So what's x equal to?
X is equal to s minus
Zero.
Zero, okay. Zero.
Yeah.
Okay, so then after I find my turning points, I, I, I ask myself, what is the gradient of the graph? How does the gradient of the graph look? So I draw a number line, and then I mark off where the turning point is, and the turning point over here is naught, right? You guys agree? Naught. Then I ask myself, what is the gradient to the left, and what's the gradient to the right? So how do we do that? We just take the derivative graph, and then just sub x-values to the left of naught and to the right of naught, right?
Yeah.
So what happens when I sub in minus one? Positive or negative?
Two, a negative.
No, it will be
Negative two, but it's to the squared, oh, never mind, sorry.
Positive, 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 okay, positive. And when x is positive, what is, what is the answer?
Two.
So it's positive. So just from this information, I can draw the graph. Because I, if I draw a number line, right? I know that the x-intercept is here. Right? And I know that the turning point is also here. And I know that the graph's gradient is always positive. Which means that the graph must do this. Because for this graph, the gradient is always positive, look here, positive, 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 positive. And isn't that what you said to me? So you see, so the first thing, x-intercepts, turning points. And then I work out the gradient. Now, sometimes you might have two turning points, right? So then I'll put another value like minus two, so then I'll work out maybe like this, right, let's say it was negative. Right? So then if it was like that, then my graph would look like this. It would be negative, so it's coming down, and then positive, and then positive. Do you guys see that?
Oh, yeah.
Or, just to play around a little bit, I can give you a graph that's like that, and like that, and like that. So it's doing that. Then down.
Then up.
In that. Doesn't that look like a cubic graph to you?
Yes.
You can describe your cubic graphs just by drawing these gradient. So you can draw, this is how you can draw any cubic graph. Okay, you might even have another one, that's like, wanna be technical, you can be like this, so it was negative, negative, positive. I'll give you 10 seconds to do it. And then I'll draw it. Tell me when I can go.
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, Nima, Nafisa, you're gonna
You've got it.
Okay, so did you guys get this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you guys can draw any cubic graph now. Okay, the only thing is, you have to work out the y-intercept, obviously, because you can take this graph and shift it up and down. Right, so the shape will be the same, but you can shift it up and down. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah. If, I know, okay, so is it, anybody have any other questions?
No.
I think we're a bit over time. Yeah, so I think you guys are happy with doing it on Mondays and Wednesdays, right? We can do Monday, is, is Monday, Wednesday too close? We can also do Thursday.
Yes. Good, I don't know about others, I'm like, I say yes for my, why?
But do you, I mean, why, it's, it's not like you guys are doing much. Shame, because this, yeah, okay.
It's nice to space it out.
Yeah.
So do you think Monday and Thursday? Yeah, cuz Monday, Wednesday is quite close, so maybe we can do Monday and Thursday. Yeah. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, enjoy your day.
Thank you, you too.